Mr. Powell, are you recording this meeting?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Sandy, I'll take attendance. Supervisor Bean.
Friend.
Supervisor Donald.
Friend.
Supervisor Pessis.
Here.
Supervisor Spease.
Here.
And Supervisor Aitken. Supervisor all accountable. Okay, a couple of comments on the agenda items. You have first order of business. First up, Carl Schenber.
If I were to be talking about taxes, tell me what you're going to do with them.
What taxes?
We're talking about budget, really?
Yeah. You said you want to talk about the agenda item.
That's only agenda, right?
Yeah, that's why I come talk.
You want me to talk to you?
Yeah, that's all. That's why I asked you that, Carl. You answered now, so. Where's your tie? Chief. You said you want to talk about the agenda item.
That's only agenda, right?
Yeah, that's why I come talk.
You want me to talk to you?
Yeah, that's all. That's why I asked you that, Carl. You answered now, so. Where's your tie? Chief. Well, this is just guessing. This is a matter for you guys. Carl Schenber, 207 East Lane.
Thank you.
Listen to the budget hearings tomorrow. You're going to possibly raise the fire hybrid tax and the streetlight tax. Why would you be doing that when you're coming in to forty million dollars?
They are in the red.
They're what?
They're in the red. So it makes sense to balance them. And it's minimal fees.
But if it's minimal, you're coming into forty million dollars. You can make that just the interest alone one month without the fees for a year. So I'm just asking why you need to raise that. Because even...
I think, whether it's going forward, you know, twenty twenty, when you look ten years from now, whatever, it's made to match up with the bills. And it's an increase of like thirty cents or...
Is gender?
It's very small, but it says we ran a deficit last year and it's like it's not for just next year.
What was the number?
You're looking ten, twenty years in the bank.
It is very small. I think it's sixty cents or something of the sorts for both of them.
Well, if it's so small, then let it go.
It's a fiscal responsibility.
All right. One other question. You make a lot of comments on that next door or whatever the thing is. When you make a comment, how come nobody can comment to your comments? Why do you block that?
I don't know.
You have to ask.
You have to ask next door. No idea.
I'll talk at the end.
All right.
Are you clear now?
No.
Which agenda item, David?
I couldn't find them.
You just have various.
It's under two thousand nineteen.
On the agenda. Under seven. Stay focused. Name and address.
Two five five West Floyd Seventh Street. The first thing I want to talk about are the minutes. And I don't know if you guys looked at the minutes. The minutes you're going to approve tonight have many errors. The first one, that's very glaring, and I'm sure you guys all caught, right? If you're sharp, is that Mr. Granger's not even listed on here. He's not as a supervisor, he's not as a other in attendance and he's not absent. But I know from the video, he wasn't at the meeting. So you missed Mr. Granger completely. So where is John Granger? The Lone Ranger? The other thing is, you've got fourteen motions that you've made in these minutes. Thirteen of them do not record what the vote was. It just says the board passed or the board did this. Except for one, the very last motion, where it's passed for the, uh, to adopt the resolution for the redemption of sewer fund. That one, you say, is unanimously. So you guys don't have to listen to me if you don't want to, but you're going to find out that you're going to get in trouble if you don't start recording the votes. This, these minutes look like a child made these minutes up. And it's not the only one, okay? It's not the only issue here. On the, uh, on the policy for the transfer fund, you should put the slide that you couldn't show us along with the minutes here. We never got to see that. I know you're watching the three minutes, John. Pay attention if you can, right?
I've got a minute left.
I know you're touching deficit, but we'll get you there.
Got a minute left.
Uh, let's see. Okay, on, under public comments, uh, it doesn't mention anything about the bonuses I talked about, which were a hundred thousand. That's a pretty significant piece of information. And you have EEMA, and it's EEMA, okay? So that's a spelling that needs to be corrected. And then when you talk about, finally, one of these minutes, when you talk about the three pension plans, you just say you had adopted the resolution authorizing the payments. But for what year? It doesn't say. Because the other meeting authorized the twenty twenty. Is this the twenty twenty or twenty nineteen? And for what pension plans? You don't mention the three pension plans. And you don't mention for how much. These minutes have to be able to be read by someone of two, three, four, or five years down the road. And they have to be understand what you said and what you conducted here. You know, I'm not trying to be a wise guy about this. I'm just telling you that you're missing a lot of information. Uh, for example, uh, I'm just going to throw this out here not to be funny or anything, but Gary Fairbanks talks about the Fall Festival and he said, hey, you know, there was a vendor there selling sex toys.
Next up, Mr. Hoover.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I got one other thing that you talk about, and that is...
Mr. Hughes. Your turn, Mr. Hoover.
On the official work for the Four Seasons.
Mr. Hoover, you're up.
If this is over the limit of ten or twenty thousand, whatever it is, we need to get four bids. This is right for our community.
Can I escort him out?
Sorry, but...
Mr. Hoover? Mr. Hughes? Mr. Hughes?
Yeah.
Escort him out. You're going to have to go.
Yep.
Thank you. Take your jacket and your phone. Thank you. Mr. Hoover? Back to reality. Go ahead.
Hello, we're ten eighty acres, Burgeburg. I have two questions down here. I'm waiting for, I thought you'd call later on the public comments. As I was questioning Sam tonight on a, an update on travelers insurance.
Do you want to make it again? You signed up for the beginning.
Yeah, well, I had that question and I also have. What is our cost for our ambulance service?
Nothing.
There's no cost for the township?
No.
Okay, that answers that.
No, I can't state.
Okay, I'll reserve the time till he makes his report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next up, minutes, public hearing, October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I make a motion, you approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Next up, minutes approval, October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Just to address those, John, so a couple of things. I mean, we want to have the right people get here and everything. You made notes for...
Okay.
For corrections. Anything you feel needs to be corrected?
If you want me to adjust the minutes, then do not approve them. I will make corrections to them so you can approve the minutes as they will.
I just mean that the attendance.
Oh, attendance, yes, I will. I was unclear, so I was...
Yeah, okay. So. Have we approved it?
No. No, we're not going to approve the October fourteenth.
I mean, you should have the right attendees and adjustments.
Next up, treasures report, September.
Make a motion to approve subject order.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Next up, whole business, adopt twenty twenty preliminary budget.
What about dispersments?
Oh, I'm sorry, dispersments.
I'll make a motion and approve it.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Whole business, adopt twenty twenty preliminary budget.
Well, Mr. Hoover, the administration has compiled the graph budget based on the meetings that were held during the last two months. And we're seeking direction from the board to adopt the preliminary budget. The board adopts the preliminary budget tonight. The final budget would be on the December ninth board agenda.
One, I guess, addition. Looking through the budget on the fire department expenses. If we could make a motion, I propose to make a motion to cover the expense. The fire police have been transferred from police department earlier this year to the fire department. And the expense wasn't necessarily put in the budget. So I had to make a motion to move that expense. We estimate to be forty thousand dollars.
It's for the fire police.
For the fire police. And that's the correction to the...
So line item for the fire department for the fire police is going to be a hundred twenty thousand versus eighty thousand.
That's correct.
That is the only change that I saw in preliminary budget.
Will you second for Dave's motion? I'll second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And you want to bring up the RCC rates?
Yeah, related to now that budget's approved, um, or not approved, sorry. Come here.
A motion, yeah, approve you.
Oh, that's right.
Now, we need a amendment to...
Now the budgets.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the budget with the modification. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And now we talk about the RCC schedule.
For the RCC, the schedule rates, we typically do rates.
Are you there?
The fee schedules, we typically do them in December. Due to the nature of the golf business, it did very well last year promoting packages early in the season in order for RCC staff to prepare the marketing materials. They need to know what those are going to be and so they can prepare our marketing materials. So I would propose to approve the packages that were presented to the board on the fee schedule.
I will second that. Derek, so you could green light.
Go take a break.
Get some sales. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. New business, approve planning module for Exeter Township Retail.
Chairman, this is a standard approval, excuse me, for the retailer. That will be adjacent to the Sheetz development, uh, put their planning module to be submitted to DEB. I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the planning module for Exeter Retail.
I'll make a second.
Any further discussion?
What's a mandate?
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aces. Next, approve conditional final land development plan for Exeter Township Retail. This is this store adjacent to Sheetz.
This land development plan's been submitted to Township for review. It's been approved by the Planning Commission at our October twenty fourth regular meeting based on the conditions that have been outlined in the proposed resolution. That's in front of the board this evening. Just to clarify some issues, uh, everything that's been approved or conditional bond has been outlined in the resolution as well as attached to our letter dated September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen for the applicant to address those outstanding issues as well as our planner, Simone Collins, her letter, uh, October twenty fourth, two thousand and nineteen regarding landscaping and building facade issues that are, that are per our saldo. If there's any discussion with the board, we are requiring curb and sidewalk to be deferred on the east side of the property. The applicant is proposing curb and sidewalk.
They're here too.
Oh, are they? Okay, if they want to speak.
They want to speak.
Justin Van Allen. So, um...
Speak into the mic so that they could hear you in the back.
Can you hear me in the back?
Okay.
I'm here in the back.
Just move more closer to you.
Sorry, can you turn that mic up a little?
Is that better?
It's better.
Is that better? Okay. Thanks to those of you who helped keep us on the agenda for tonight. I appreciate it. We have a slightly amended elevation that is different than the one that's shown on the screen. There's a little more variation in the roof line and some of the canopies are different. We don't have this one in color, but I wanted to show it to the township. And I wanted to address one of the comments that's called out in the resolution that was in the Simone Collins' letter regarding the stone veneer and the stone mantle under some of the windows. As you see here, we have storefront glazing systems where the door entrances are and we use similar storefront glazing systems where there are, uh, there are not doors here. And this is our architect's best interpretation of the architectural guidelines that were in the ordinance. The comment doesn't specifically relate to a line item in the architectural guidelines, but there is a reference to the far left side where we do show a stone veneer and a stone mantle on the far right side, uh, glazing system and also on the western elevation. And in light of how we interpreted the architectural guidelines, we would like to respectfully ask Township to maintain the storefront glazing systems as they are. And we could then modify the eastern side of the building to more closely resemble the western side of the building. We did this originally to create some variation and we, as I said, we amended this to create a little more architecturally interesting variation. We think this interpretation of the architectural guidelines is appropriate for the tenant mix that we expect in this building and also incorporate some of the character that we think the township is going for. But that's kind of a comment. We're sort of looking for like, you know, a middle way to incorporate what we think is the character of the building that I think the township is asking us for or Simone Collins is asking for.
Those vertical elements between storefronts on the left, keep going, next one. No, other way.
This one.
Other way.
This one.
Yeah, right there. What are they? The vertical element going up to the...
Are you referring to these lines here between on the stone?
Yeah.
I told you about the canopies, I believe.
They're the same as... They're the same as represented on this job. They're part of the canopy.
Part of the canopy. What's the material going to be?
Uh, decorative metal brackets listed here.
Is that going to be like a...
Red brick.
The red facade itself.
Facade itself.
What's the facade going to be constructed?
Brick.
It's brick veneer.
Okay, is that brick all the way down?
Brick all the way down.
So those vertical offsets, if for lack of a better word, are going to be brick then?
You're talking about the...
Please speak into the mic.
Are you talking about the white elements or...
The rest of the brick. The red.
It'll be brick.
Is it brick veneer? It says brick veneer, but is it going to be actual brick?
It's actual brick. It's just not a full down brick.
Well, I mean, I knew it.
Yeah.
I'm in constructions, I know. And a brick veneer or brick, so I just was just kind of, it's going to be some kind of a, it's more like echo type thing, you know, just kind of goes on top. It kind of gets ordered on top, but it's not a full brick per se.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not...
It's not like a structural.
Place, yeah.
Right, it's not structural.
But it's, it's two inch, uh, two inch thick.
A brick veneer, more or less.
Yeah. It's not a manufactured rubber.
I think the, I think the issue that Simone Collins may have had was there is a section regarding the, um, the clear window door ratio to the wall being one to one to two to one ratio. That might have been where the stone, um, where it faces those five windows. He was mentioning about having a stone veneer several feet up from the window, whereas the window, I believe, is going right down to the ground, correct? I think that's what they were interpreting, the ordinance, where there's more glass area. Glass area outweighs the wall area.
Okay, that, well, it's not called out in the comment letter, which...
No, I understand the section wasn't referenced there. And I, when I looked at the ordinance, that's my interpretation. At least talking to the staff, that's what the issue was. Was I think it was the wall area that being more window, window slash door glass area than wall area. If that makes, that makes any sense.
I remember there was like some reference.
There is. Yeah, it's one to one to two to one for commercial and retail area. So if it's...
For the horizontal.
I believe so, yeah, for the front, yeah. For square, for the street level facade. So it's facing the street, so it's going to front.
So if we comply with the ratio...
I would have to check with them. I don't see it being an issue.
Okay, so could we just amend that point in the resolution to allow for us to work on that?
The board doesn't have any objections, I agree.
So you're saying whether it says a two, two inch manufactured stone veneer that would continue along right there where you see it on the right side?
I believe the recommendation was to allow for the, so the window actually, they actually are proposing it on the side view when you're looking, when you're looking at the perspective to the right hand side where that beige color, that's what Simone Collins was referencing to. They were recommending that would be installed for the five front windows that are technically street view. But I believe that was the issue was that ratio. So if the ratio can be met, then obviously that a comment would probably be to address that.
Okay, so we would not need to extend the stone veneer if we can meet the ratio in the ordinance? If not, we would need to address it through, uh, architectural elements that are referenced in the letter?
That's correct.
Okay. What do you guys think?
Well, how would you meet it if you don't continue the stone step? How would you...
I'll have to adjust with the architect and see if there's a way to modify the elevation to comply with that ratio. And we'll have to show that as part of the plan that was planned.
Any other questions?
Resolution? See, if the board is agreeable to that, then the resolution we need to modify reflect that in the earlier resolution and I can approve it. I think it's a minor modification, you can prove the resolution as, with that modification to it.
The improvements agreement has been reviewed by our office and we do recommend we prepare a spreadsheet. Everybody's in agreement with those funds to be posted. So all the other items have been addressed with the exception, those minor issues that have been already outlined in the resolution.
So I make a motion to approve the resolution, you know, with those minor modifications to meet the ratio.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming again. Approve resolution of the modernization and extension of the dedication for Country Club Estates Phase Two.
Yes, this is, this is the final section of Sawgrass Drive that's located in Exeter. I mean, I'm sorry, Country Club Estates Phase Two. A portion of the section has been previously dedicated to the township and is being currently owned and maintained by the township. This is the remaining section. Our office has been working with the developer and the solicitor's office going over all the outstanding items that need to be corrected with regards to the bond. We finally did come to a resolution where this could be a two, more, two actions will be taking place this evening. One, we're going to be reducing the current escrow account. In the past years ago, money was always allocated for maintenance in the escrow account. Typically, we require a maintenance bond. However, this, this plan, there's been a history before where it was included in the escrow. So to simplify things, we're reducing the escrow account about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I'll get that correct amount. And then the remaining balance will be used as financial security for two years. I'm sorry, eighteen months. The amount that's going to be reduced, the escrow, which constitutes escrow release number fourteen, is for a total amount of a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and one dollars and one cent with the remaining balance of a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars, eighty-one cents. That will remain for eighteen months to cover for the maintenance bond and the posting of security. So that any defects or any problems arise, the township has leverage to go back to the developer and have those corrected during that eighteen month period. Uh, we recommend, I'm sorry, we recommend to the board, everything's been, um, is in compliance. Sam's office, we have the bond, has been reviewed by the solicitor's office. Therefore, our recommendation is to, for the board to consider offer of dedication for Sawgrass Drive and Country Club Estates Two.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Joe. Pre-resolution of streetlight ownership, Sawgrass Drive.
This actually is a follow-up to our, so dedication is for streetlights that need to be energized by MedEd. In order to do so, the township needs to adopt a resolution authorizing MedEd to energize those four streetlights for that portion of Sawgrass that has been just dedicated. Our recommendation would be to, to proceed and adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution for the streetlight ownership.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Next up, pre-resolution authorizing submission of multimodal grant application.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a redundant resolution that was pissed last year. But it stated that Lisa Vanderland would, as chair of the board, would sign the documents. Pandat said, um, you need to change it. So we prepared a resolution with John Casadesse as chairman to sign the document.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. All right, now some exciting stuff. I was all very boring. Lori, talk about the survey of the municipal complex rec center.
Hey, I always have the exciting things to talk about. So I'm just going to briefly go over the results to our survey. We put this out at the end of mid to late September to try to get public input as we start the planning process for a new municipal complex and potential community rec center. So just some brief data about the survey. It was twenty-three questions. It took an average of six minutes and thirty seconds to respond to it. It was available on our website, through email, social media, and we also have paper copies available here and at the library, although nobody did take us up on that option. We did have eight hundred and seven responses, which is pretty good for an online survey.
Rec center, that's phenomenal, that's record breaking.
Pretty good about that, yeah, so we've got some really good data. So just to briefly cover the demographic... So just to briefly cover the demographics, most of the respondents were Caucasian females between the age of thirty-five and fifty-four with an annual average household income of a hundred thousand or above. And ninety-six percent of those who responded to the survey were township residents. There was no way to ensure that it was a hundred percent township residents, just by nature of how it was available. So we wanted to kind of start out by seeing who uses our current building. So we're talking about new municipal complex, new township offices, so wanted to try to get an idea of who's coming to see us and what they're coming here for. Now, for those of us who work in this building every day, we already know that most people are not coming here very often. According to the survey, sixty-four percent of those who responded said they never visit the township, thirty-five percent said they visit somewhat often, and less than one percent said that they visit very often. It's probably mostly township employees that responded to that one, yeah. So then I wanted to try to nail down who's coming to what departments and which ones are the most frequently visited. Again, overall, none of them are very heavily trafficked. The most popular were tax collector, parks and rec, and administration. And I also threw in a question in there to see how many people are attending board of supervisors meetings. Eighty-three percent of those who responded said they never attend meetings, and less than two percent indicated that they attend very often. That was also good, yeah. So moving from current facility usage to what we're looking to do in the future, wanted to see what's important to people and what they think that they'll use in a facility. So I had six options up here. One was attractive aesthetic interior and exterior, a community recreation center, community meeting spaces, advanced technology, walkability, and green space. So four of those six were rated at fifty percent or higher as being fairly important or a must-have to respondents. Seventy-seven percent indicated that a community recreation center was fairly important or a must-have. Seventy-one percent responded the same way for community meeting spaces. Sixty-five percent said that advanced technology was important, and fifty-eight percent rated green space as fairly important or a must-have. So then I wanted to move into how often people think that they're going to actually come to a new facility. So sixty percent of people who responded said that they're likely or very likely to utilize a community recreation center. Now, I know you might be wondering, because I just told you that seventy-seven percent said that a community center is very important or higher, or a must-have or fairly important. Some people who responded and said that a community center was very important, then responded and said maybe they're neutral about whether or not they'll come to it, or maybe they, some of them even said that it might be unlikely that they'll use it. I would attribute, it wasn't very many, but I would attribute that to people who may not personally use a community recreation center, but still feel like it's an important thing for a community to have. So I threw some ideas in here to see, okay, if we had a community recreation center, what are the most important things to people actually in the facility? So of those, there were four that were rated fifty percent or above again, and that was adult social activities, youth social activities, youth sports programs, and adult health and fitness programs were the most important things that people said that they would use at a facility. Only eight percent of those who responded indicated that they wouldn't use anything that the facility offered. So we wanted to kind of gauge what organizations we have in our community that might take advantage of a meeting space, or maybe would like to use something if they don't currently use the den center, or something's not available for them. So I asked a couple of questions to see what kind of groups people might be a part of. Twenty percent indicated that they're members of community groups or organizations that would like to use a community meeting space. Most of them meet less than once a month, and most of them indicated that they have ten members or less. So just to summarize the initial findings here, again, seventy-seven percent indicated a desire to have a community recreation center added to our township. There was also a strong desire indicated for community meeting spaces, whether or not that's for an organization or for other purposes. And there was an overall theme of people wanting more active opportunities, not just for youth, but also for adults and for seniors in our community. So there were also ten open-ended questions that I included in this survey, which I'm not, I must have been having a day where I thought, you're going to really have a lot of time to analyze this data when I get this. So that means with over eight hundred and seven respondents, I have over eight thousand results to pour through. So I'm continuing to analyze that data, and I'll have that for a further presentation in January.
Happy reading.
Thanks, yeah, I read most of them. Analyzing them is another, is another topic.
Questions from the court?
I think it's great, I think, overall, I think overall it was good. And I really, I mean, I'm definitely, I know most of us are in favor of a community center, so I think it's great that it really just solidifies that type of what the township's asking for.
Yeah, we got good responses, which you can't really ask for more than that. I think people really, overall, people really took it seriously. There weren't that many uncalled remarks in it, I'll say.
Was there any sports in terms of some of the writings? Was there any, like soccer?
Basketball was the highest mentioned. There was a lot of soccer mentioned as well, but yeah, basketball was definitely the most frequently mentioned.
Well, if you have a basketball court, you can do like an indoor soccer.
Absolutely, well, that's something that, I think I talked about it a bit in my budget presentation, that we run the summer basketball program. We don't have anywhere to go when it rains. So last year, this year wasn't so bad, but last year when we had terrible weather, we lost kids at the end of the season to football and to going back to school because we just played so long because of rain. So it'd be great from that perspective.
What's it going to cost to use this facility?
Ten million dollars. Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Anna Eifert, Ten Wegman Road. I'm not on the list, but...
Yeah, she did sign up, so perfect.
Can I talk?
Yes, you can. I'm saying you can.
Because when you, when you go to these sports facilities, sports games for the kids, you have to pay to get in. Why, years ago, you never had to pay? Why? And what is it going to cost to use this facility?
One of the things that the survey said, there's a need. The next step is to, you know, go through the questions, analyze the questions, come back, have a conversation in January, and then develop partnerships is a key element here. When you look at the desire, people, what they're wanting to have, there's a lot of things the township can't do or doesn't do. We don't do social programming for anybody. So there are organizations out there who provide those services, and I think it's incumbent upon us to try and identify them, see what kind of service they could provide, what kind of cost, if there is a cost. And together to the board and the public, here's a, here's a package of partners that can work with us to provide the needs for the community at this community center. So that would be like the third conversation we have in January and February and March next year. It's, you know, the cost of building, it is an issue. We think we can get partners to help us build it. We think we can get partners to help us operate it. We will not, our current thinking is now, we will not hire a staff of forty employees to manage this thing. We are looking for partners to come in, run it, we'll buy the space, they will pay for part of it, and they will be individuals in the organizations to run programs. Does not a, we're not here to build a big organization. We understand how these things work. If we can get partners to come in and operate it, if they win, they win; if they fail, they fail, and there's no cost to the resident. That's our approach right now. So the conversation we will be having in January, February, March of next year will probably be a modification of that, but we think we have, you know, we can identify some partners to provide some of the programming. And as that, those conversations unfold in the next year, some of the costs will be identified.
Excellent. Signing stuff. Good times ahead in 2020. Thank you, Lori, great job. Next up, discuss application to zoning hearing board, 561 Church Lane Road.
Chairman, the applicant has proposed himself to our property in two lots. The applicant is, neither lot will meet the area due to steep slopes in order to have lots available for resale. They're in a need side yard, they'll need setbacks. I think this was something that's been before the board before in some fashion, is that correct? Yes, this plan has been in front of the planning commission. It was reviewed, and their zoning request was also reviewed by the planning commission as well. Our zoning ordinance requires where there are steep slopes, that the applicant needs to compute the areas, and we have formulas where a certain portion of that lot cannot be considered usable. Therefore, it needs to be subtracted, and I do areas computed in order for them to need that minimum lot area they're looking for, or seeking a barretts, because they can't meet the minimum lot area based on the steep slopes of that area.
From the planning commission side?
What was your, what was your recommendation on this one? We have two up there on Church Lane.
Yeah, the planning commission denied the request.
Yeah, that's the one I thought. Yeah, there just wasn't enough land, and then we would have had issues with the lane as well, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, there was, and there was one other thing, I think, as far as the use of the one building that's still up in the air.
Correct, that's, that's the, it's been the staff's...
There was like three issues that just didn't meet with requirements.
Joe, what were the acreages once you did the, once they did the steep slopes?
They're, they're below, I believe, around two point minimum lot area. Do you have those? Oh, they were close. Yeah, they're very, they're very close. They're required three point two four acres, and I believe they only have three point oh three acres. And the second lot was three point three eight is required, and they're all, they're only proposing three point oh two. So they're probably, on an average, close to three tenths of an acre shy of what they're required for his zoning ordinance. The issue before the board is, do you want to have, provide tangents at this meeting to enter testimony against or for the subdivision?
We'll do a cross-examine, that's up to you. What's the state's prejudice, Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Have they indicated what the prejudice is here?
Just the fact that they want to subdivide the two lots, and the hardship is basic. Slopes, and there's, there to remain as is, meaning they're not developing those lots at this time.
Yeah, the question is whether you want someone from my office to go and enter appearance on behalf of the township, or just left that board?
Left the board?
Resolving.
Left the board and the planning?
No, the zoning hearing board.
Zoning hearing board.
The state, Joe.
Yeah.
You guys good at that? Next up, discuss application to zoning hearing board, 5223 Broad Street.
This zoning application also came forward to planning commission last Monday, October twenty-first. The applicant currently owns two lots. They reside at five two-two-six Uplands Willow Street, which is the triangular lot to your left. And the other lot is owned by them, that was their father, and they inherited this lot as well. The applicant would like to, that address is five two-two-three. The applicant would like to sell that lot, which is five two-two-three. However, they'd like to take a portion of that lot and annex it onto the lot, which is house number five two-two-six, where they're currently residing at, to allow for a larger buffer area from the current lot line. Currently, they, there's a driveway that they've been utilizing on five two-two-three, and they like to keep that on their new lot. However, in order to do so, they will create a more non-conforming lot area for five two-two-three. They're looking for relief from the dimensional requirements for the lot width, lot area, and setback and so forth. I believe the planning commission will go position on this matter.
Yeah, I voted against it. I was okay with it. If you want, I can show you guys what they want to do. It's kind of confusing, but...
So basically, this driveway here goes with this property now? They want to make it so this driveway goes with this property. As you can see, it's right next to it.
And they're already both non-conforming? So it doesn't really change the status, it just, from a common sense standpoint, you look at it and you say, why would you not let somebody do that, basically?
They're making one less non-conforming and making the other lot more non-conforming, if that makes any sense.
And they're, like I said, they're both non-conforming already, so it doesn't really change their status, it just changes the technicality of the status.
For zoning, if you make it a lot more non-conforming, you need to seek relief from the zoning hearing board.
Same question then? Want to take the same stance? Anything, many?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I believe the planning, like Jeff said, I believe the planning commission understood their concerns, however, there was no, I guess hardship really presented, just one was trying to create a lot.
Yeah, they weren't there, they weren't at the meeting to, for us to ask questions about.
They had no representation.
That was why the majority voted, you know, no position, but I voted, anyway, because I was okay taking the position, and I was okay with it.
Yeah, when you take a street view of it, it even has steps that goes towards...
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it's part of the other property already.
That looks pretty poor.
So same thing as the other one? Just stay neutral?
I would say so.
Okay, consensus. Next up, approve additional work of the Four Seasons Room under way to Country Club. More ongoing work to remediate the water damage.
As you know, we've been doing some, had some work done over in the Sun, in the Four Seasons Room. As they were tearing off the front of the fascia boards and the nailers, they found a lot more rotten wood, unfortunately. And that had to be replaced simply because that was part of the, where the new trip edge would come on for the new roof. They also, once they got that, we found out a lot of the plywood underneath the front end of the, the building was also rotten as well. So we had to tear that off. And to replace this stuff, the amount comes out to forty-one thousand, five hundred thousand dollars.
Did John's emergency ed work, is that...
Yeah, unfortunately, once, once they found out that they can't go any farther and cap the roof, not right until they can do this more.
The point is we don't have time to dent it out.
Yeah.
Was the change order to...
Yeah.
Is he in motion?
Yeah, it's going to be just a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
You got it fixed. Any further discussion? If I was a favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
Department reports, parents. We started leaf collection, so everybody be patient, and we will get around to you. It's a very tense time of the year. Seems to be more tense than the winter time, but they will get around. We have four pickers going, and we started them today, and they will be going every day that they can unless it's raining too hard. Other than that, we're, the other kind of work we're doing, we have some, little work over at the Country Club, and we've been cleaning up some stuff down at Trail Run, so that's what we've been working on the last two weeks.
Chief, and happy First Responders Day, by the way.
Thank you.
Want to thank your team and the fire department and all first responders. Today is First Responders Day. For those that didn't know.
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't have much, just a few things that are happening in the police department. We attended a safe Halloween event over at Staples that went, that went really well. Every year, the high school has a trick-or-treat night inside the high school, a safe trick-or-treat night. Our officers attended that as well and had a booth set up to provide candy and other items for the, for the kids that came through the high school. In addition, Halloween, our officers will be out and about. If you see us, you have your little ones come up to the car, we'll be giving... If you see us and you have your little ones, come up to the car, we'll be giving out candy as well as we travel through the township on trick-or-treat. One other thing that we've noticed here in the last couple of weeks, there's been an uptick in theft from vehicles. We have actors that are, are going through shopping classes and other areas within the township and looking for vehicles that are either unlocked and/or vehicles that have a purse showing or some valuable item showing through the windows. So just a reminder, you know, when you leave your vehicle, if you're shopping, make sure you take your purse or any valuables with you if, you know, and make sure your door is locked. A few times again, they'll see the valuables and they'll break the window and grab them out, so just make sure you're securing your valuables when you leave your vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Larry, make a report on some damage we had over at the rain.
Yeah, Larry. Come on up.
From which park? Both parks?
The rain.
Oh, the rain.
No, only the rain.
Both?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Saturday morning, I got a phone call from our park space maintenance, Burnt Susan, Rich Ferraro, that one of our streetlights was hit at the main park. That park there, we had to call an electrician in because there was exposed wires that had a hole. So calling an electrician in on a Saturday is not cheap considering we don't have one on staff.
Not me.
Then, Sunday morning, we, I received a phone call that the men's room in the rain hollow smelled like smoke, like something was burning. Went over there, seen a burnt mark on the floor, like they tried to light the toilet paper holder on fire. The trash can was melted inside where they put a bunch of paper inside that and lit that on fire. We do have that in one video. I think it's in the hands of the chief. They also took apart a picnic table bench and through that, we have that on video too. We had to have one of our employees go over there and clean up the mess, try to fumigate it, try to get the bathroom back into order so it could be used for that day. Is there anything else you want to talk about? We do have one video of somebody going in after the two people did use the bathroom and carry the trash can out that was smoldering. However, that person never called us to say that this was going on, but it was Saturday afternoon around four o'clock that our video shows this, so.
I know the crime, extra crime watch folks are here, I know you guys posted it as well, so thanks for all your help and getting the word out. The citizens, communities, is the way we'll fix this.
Can the video be released?
It's in the hands of the police right now, so.
So we have a juvenile suspect, so there's an issue there, but we, we also, I think we have identified at least one of them, so we're working towards that.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Larry. Engineer, Mr. Kowalski.
Just one item, just want to announce that the Norfolk Southern has began improvements for the Culver and the. Hopefully, weather will hold up and we'll have a.
It's a warm, a warm fall, so.
It's proceeding, so.
Ricky, press.
More of the progress, that's all I have.
I have one question for you. Is Penn going to make the left turn at the Golds on Perkium in there? Do you know?
I can.
Not left turn, but like the arrows?
Oh, the turning arrows, they should be putting those back in.
They're not.
I noticed they weren't, they weren't.
Cover them.
None of the, they called them, none of the legends have been made yet, just their parties.
They are going to do that, can you check on that?
Sure.
Is they, one of the residents, Mr. Ben Go, and he said he almost got killed, so.
Okay.
He, I said, bring it up tonight. That's all I have for the Tuesday. Any other questions for Joe? Next up, Sam's solicitor report.
Just a couple of things, most everybody probably knows, but the sale and the waste water treatment plant closed last week, so that is, that's done. There was also a lawsuit that had been filed by a former township employee against the township area, that was dismissed with prejudice by the court last week. And we had a, so that's over. We had a executive session before the meeting where we talked about personnel and dispute with St. Lawrence over sewer related issues. That's all I have, so no questions.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Granger, any report?
Yes. We closed on the acquisition of the Promenade Shopping Center last week. We also, because our business is still operating there, it's still a taxable property. However, these listings was successful in getting the assessed value reduced from a little more than $4 million down to a little more than $1 million, so it's a recorder or something. Taxes are not going to be paid and it's sufficient. The rental income from the businesses will pay for the taxes, so don't pay any tax money coming out of town. Finally, the assessed value of the running country club was changed from $1.2 million to zero because we are not operating the country club as a business for profit. So the taxes now will be zero. And that's a savings of $25,000, $30,000 a year because of JMH was operating a business there and therefore immediately taxable parcel of land. So those two items save the township a little more than $175,000 in taxes. That will revert back if there's a business established again? Well, the, the stuff in the running country club will eventually happen, you know, when an operator comes in here and opens the business, they'll be taxable, but the operator will be paying those taxes. And it remains to be seen what happens at the Promenade Shopping Center as the planning for that project goes forward.
And the sewer plant's going to go on the tax rolls now, so.
Sewer plant going to tax rolls.
Close to the wash.
Although, we did have to pay the transfer tax on that, but we'll get half of that money back, so it's like paying ourselves.
Half of the tax.
Half, we'll pay, get half.
So, yeah, great news, great week, lots of good stuff happening. Next up, public comment. Let's talk about, let's get the Halloween stuff out of the way. Then I'll get back to you, just want to put this, Jeremy.
Jeremy, let's see that 4981 in Sky Road. So, I was wondering, hey, we only have one Halloween trick-or-treat night this year and I'm fine with that decision. It just so happens, our Exeter lot, it's going to rain that night. I have a little daughter, four years old, and I also have a heck of a barbecue party. Not going to be able to throw that in the rain. Wondering if we could shift it either to Wednesday or Friday and make an announcement there?
Yeah.
Friday does look better weather and you don't have the school night. Just want to know so we can get the announcement out. People don't drive like crazy through the neighborhoods and stuff like that.
Yeah, I, discussion from the board.
I just thought Wednesday might be better because the football team has an away game, so.
Perfect.
It's supposed to rain Wednesday?
Uh, it says late at night, I don't know how early though, but it should be better than Thursday.
Does that mess your up with the?
No, we have seen our officers on the ways of.
So I'm fine going on Wednesday?
Same here.
Same, five to nine P.M.
Cool.
Any other comments from the board? How about anybody from, is it, is it going to affect anybody's trick-or-treating out there? Aaron, is your Halloween party going to be messed up? You're shaking your head, so I'm just asking.
Yeah.
You're not going to trick-or-treat there?
No.
Is it okay? Okay going on Wednesday because of the rain? Why not then?
Halloween is Halloween.
That's what I said. That's my quote, that's my, you're seeing my quotes now. But I think with the rain, I think Wednesday is the better way to go.
So.
Consensus from the board?
Weather currently, according to AccuWeather, currently has becoming a steady rain late on Wednesday night.
So, for Thursday?
I don't know what that means, but it has an 80% chance that evening. Sorry.
Maybe Wednesday, then if it good rains, then it's just crap shoots, kids don't got to rain.
What's you guys?
I'm fine either way.
We have like a Halloween week. The trick-or-treats are like Saturday. I'm, I'm fine with maybe Wednesday. I bowl, so I won't be home. I'll make the motion to change it to Wednesday this year, just this year.
We're going to post it on social media and all that?
No. No.
That's the board's directive.
No, absolutely not. That is for emergencies, that is not, the trick-or-treat night is not an emergency.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, that's my.
The work can get out.
No, no, I know, we can.
I'm just asking a question. Because people complain that they didn't get.
We're not going to arrest anyone if they happen to miss this and they show up on Thursday.
Halloween is still Halloween. I don't say what trick-or-treaters. I have some.
I agree.
I mean, yeah, they're happening, sure. Because we only were doing one night, if they come out Wednesday, it's come out Thursday, you know, whatever, yeah.
All right, so Wednesday night's Halloween, five to nine.
This is, this is year.
You made the motion, I seconded it, we're talking about it now. So take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. So Wednesday, five to nine, we'll get the word out on social media. Thank you, Jeremy, thanks for the, thanks for the idea as well. Michelle, you want to talk about Exeter retail?
No.
And then we'll get into the noise ordinance. You're good?
I'd like to make another comment.
Sure, come on up.
I've heard many times from you that we all have to be civil.
Just, just got to do name and address. Name and address.
Michelle Kirchner, Lebanon One Stonehenge Drive. And I think we're all owed the same respect and regardless, if you like, like it or not, what someone's saying, that you, that they're residents, we all walk the same path and that everybody up here, board, board works for the township, that you have a right to hear them out and you don't play bad boy to one person and good boy to another. So let's show respect, here's some valid points about the men's, which are wrong and whatever, and hear them. If you don't like what they have to say, you just say thank you for your comments and let's try and, and just work together.
Just remember, I'll, I will counter you, respect is a two-way street.
I know, but, yeah, we can discuss that.
We can discuss that after.
After, because, remember that, two-way, that means you two.
Exactly. Respect is a two-way street. That's our lesson for tonight. Okay, noise ordinance, time. Noise ordinance, we'll hit you at the end. All right. We have a lot of people here for this. Shades, you want to come up again? Michael, Jackie, and then we have John Hubert as well. And Mr. Hubert, so we kind of lump all these together. You guys want to talk in terms of one person or you guys all want to talk? There's a lot of people that sound, just have one spokesman. The noise.
My name's Emmanuel Eifert, I live at Ten Wegman and this last time, last meeting, I didn't get a chance to get here, so, but I took the petition around and I'm the one that had them all signed. And I went, Mrs. Weaver, the one that used to own the land where. Shades. 115. She, I talked to her a while back and I asked her, why is she selling the land? And her comment was, it's too much grass to bode, too much noise from the neighbor and she said it was time to move on. So I just wanted to make that clear, that I did talk to her and so that is clear. I just want to tell you a story. Back 60 some years ago, I had the bright idea to get a dirt bike. And my dad said to me, oh, where are you going to ride this dirt bike? I said, on your land. That he owns 15, 16 acres, which is now overlooked development. And he, he said, okay, you could do that. But to do that, he, he made me, if I was going to do this, go to every neighbor within 500 feet of the, of the land and get them to okay it. If they didn't okay it, the deal was off. So you know, I didn't find dirt. So, and that's the end of the story.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Thank you. Next up.
John Hubert, 75 Wegman Room. I've lived there for over 26 years. Wife and I have never, we built a house because it was quiet. It's my last two or three years where the noise from the motorcycle which had to be behind us is just so overwhelmingly loud. These kids just aren't, it's too loud, it's, they're not going to move for several years, they're not going to grow out of it. And it's not just a couple of us that are here, it's everyone surrounding this one neighbor. So it's, it's not like you're, seems like you're trying to accommodate one neighbor against the majority that don't, that can't stand the noise. So it's, it's been going on for too long, something has to be done about this. I mean, it seems like they have all the rights and we have none.
Give you some news on.
If you recall, the last meeting, the board retained an acoustical, an acoustical engineer. It was when we were working on this, at the last time you guys were here, the special counsel suggested we hire an expert. We, he reckoned, I think, got a hold of this guy. He suggested that he come out to the township and lessen the measurements.
The thing is, this doesn't mean a zone for that though, is it? That means it's a zone for a motorcycle.
No, it's not.
One, one thing at a time, okay? The, he will be out here on November, he's coming on the evening of November 7th and he will be here November 8th. And he will, on the 7th, he will collect background noise in the township in the evening. On the 8th, he'll collect background noise across the township during the day and he will also visit the site. So I'd like, whose property is immediately adjacent? Are they here tonight?
We are.
Shades, 115.
Shade, okay. I don't know what time he will be there, I've been in process of sending out letters to everybody on this. If it's all right, he would like to come to your property and we will get a, an ATV and a motorcycle.
Which I got.
And he will run those units and he has his devices and you can tell him where you are when the things are, he'll collect information along several places.
His motorcycle?
Yeah.
There's a huge difference.
I understand, listen, I understand there are, there are differences here. The issue that this gentleman knows noise, that I, no one here will understand what it is. Every motorcycle and ATV has to have a muffler on it and has to be approved by EPA.
These are dirt bikes.
It, it's everything.
With performance mufflers?
Everything, okay? So if they are not on the motorcycle, whether, or the thing, it's a violation of the, it's a manufacturer's violation and that can be stopped. Now, I, I understand there are several issues here and I would, I would think that if it's okay, we can invite everyone to come to your house, your property, so that you can meet, you can meet here, I have a problem meeting here as a group and then go to your property and get, collect the information. I have no problem with that.
We're just a little confused, this is the first we're hearing, so they're riding on our property or they're riding on the neighbor's property where they ride and they're...
Well, we're not going to ride on any of their property. They ride, there's a property line there, I mean, you know your property a little better than I do.
Yeah, so he's riding on our lawn?
If there's a space where he can collect the information, he can ride it in a road, can ride it on your driveway. There's a, there are areas where he can ride the, the incident, it's, he's got to collect data at this site.
Well, we're just trying to understand, so, so, but it's supposed to be comparable to what's happening, right? Because we don't want something where it's nowhere near what's happening, right?
Right, that's right.
So if on their property, they have a racetrack and they get it going so fast that they can jump off a jump, how would we recreate that on our property without tearing up our lawn?
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know why the particulars, Miss Shade, I'm sorry.
Let's find that out, because I, I was under the impression they were going to ride on their yard on their track and they were going to measure it from the neighbors' houses.
And the data is not accurate data because it's not reflecting what they're riding, it's reflecting what is.
Right, but no, like Mrs. Shade said, like, they're not going to do that in her driveway.
Right, but no, like Mrs. Shade said, like, they're not gonna do that in her driveway, what they do in their yard. So I thought they were gonna do what they do in their yard, and then we were gonna take measurements all around.
Did you talk to the?
No, I mean, what, isn't that what you thought as well?
No, I didn't think anything.
Well, if they're gonna measure noise from somebody's, well, I didn't know it. I just said I thought that's what they were gonna do. It's called an assumption. But I mean, we have to start with something, right? Don't, don't you wanna know what the noise sounds like at your house from their house? Right, that's what we're trying to get an official measurement of that. So you don't wanna do that?
You're the one that just said, so our assumption was it was gonna be on this bike. Oh, yes.
Right. Well, if someone would come to your house to measure the noise level of noise coming from your neighbors, wouldn't you think that's what? Why are you interrupting me? I'm not raising my voice. I'm explaining the question that you just asked me.
The issue here is the acoustical engineer needs to collect data on how much noise.
That we understand. We're just trying to, this is the first where we have.
I understand. I, I understand. It's the first everyone's hearing about it, and I'm trying to.
Well, I didn't, I didn't figure it out. I was saying, I felt that, I was actually thinking that's what you thought. I was agreeing with what I thought you thought. That's all I'm saying. If you wanna do it a different way, then we can look at different options.
The engineer will inform everyone what he is trying to accomplish. How he will do it. And how he's collecting, and what the data he's collecting, what it means. So that if, when the board adopts an ordinance on noise, there's data behind the numbers. So that when you go to court, the, the, cause this is, this is gonna go to court eventually. There is a rational reason why the number is the number as opposed to, I'm throwing a number on the dirt board and that's the number. It is, it is a, I'm sorry, I don't know enough about it.
So, and just to be clear, we're not not understanding any of that. We actually comprehend all this. The only thing we didn't understand is this is the first time we're hearing something about, we have no problem with people meeting on our property, but I just wanted to make it clear that we don't have a racetrack.
Yes, and that's what I was saying too. I was agreeing, I felt bad. I didn't want, no, I didn't want motorcycles riding on your yard. That's what I was trying to, John, I mean.
I'm sorry, I don't know the particulars about your property. Um, we will not damage your property?
I was just trying to explain to you so you understood that.
I understand, okay. I, I got it, okay. So, I understand.
So however we figured it out beforehand, that's fine.
Well, he'll figure it out when, when he.
Can we just do the, the ATVs like anywhere, or do we do it at, near their property?
I think, I don't know.
You can maybe do it somewhere near here, so that we can do the ATVs here, measure the noise.
There are other spots in the township, we own property, where we can do some things there. But I think it's important that, it's important that the engineer will be here to collect data and he wants to visit. He wants to visit your site and talk with everyone there. So we will send out letters to everyone if, if, I apologize, I may not send it to everyone because I don't have your, your name or whatever. Just tell your friends that.
If you let us know, I'm sure.
I'll let you know. I don't know the time yet. When I do, it'll be on November the eighth. The issue about zoning.
That's me.
Okay.
Just make one more thing. Why do we even have to go through all this noise ordinance when it's not even zoned for motorcycles? Why, why is that? You save yourself all this money rather than going through all this.
Alright. Two attorneys have looked at our ordinance. And they have both rendered opinions that the ordinance is, is crafted for an amusement facility. So you have a, you know, a racetrack for people to come and pay and go for it.
That's not correct. Not according to the ordinance. John Knoll, one oh five Wegman Road. Right here in writing, um, ordinance is three ninety eleven Rural Conservation, section B, number six, recreational uses, including parks, except amusement parks, playgrounds, picnic grounds, horse riding trails, and academies, swimming areas and pools, hiking trails, trails for non-motorized bicycles. They're talking about trails. They're not talking about motorized vehicles.
Let me, let me unfold how this is gonna occur. Okay? The noise guy is gonna go out and collect noise data.
But this is appurtenance. This is a totally different ordinance. Noise is one, zoning is a different.
We're gonna collect the noise information. Cause it's a noise witness. And ATB regulations are, except, will be corrected as a second ordinance. When the data comes back, the special counsel will be here. I, I think the noise guy will be here too, but I'm not, I can't be a hundred percent on that. And then you can raise those questions with the special counsel. He said his opinion, and he's rendered it to us.
Also, we met with State Representative Barry Joswiak with this, and he said it's plain black and white. He doesn't understand how it cannot be enforced.
I'm, I'm telling you, the board of supervisors has a special counsel handling this matter. And they're, they're required to take the special counsel's opinion, not the opinion of the special counsel's opinion. That is what's governing the issue. Now, they may want to, they may choose to amend the ordinance to prohibit this, or to settle their standards. That is the next conversation after you collect the information. Have special counsel here to talk about.
When the gentleman comes to do the noise study?
Yes.
Will he meet with us prior to doing the study so we can make sure that we're all on the same page?
He's collecting, he's collecting the data. You'll all be there before, during, and after. He'll submit his findings afterwards. So you will have an opportunity to talk to him before he submits his findings.
Cause I just wanna make sure that what he's measuring is the same size engine, same stroke engine, as what we're being exposed to.
This guy is an expert in this field, okay? And he, he can talk to you for hours. Okay, just tell me when it is and I will be someplace else.
I will be there. Tell me where it be, I will be there.
I don't, I don't wanna, listen, I don't wanna be funny about it. I had a half an hour conversation with Scott, and I, I got lost after the first ten minutes. Okay, I'm serious. I'm just, okay, this is the guy I wanna talk to, cause he knows more about it than I do. And I, I recommend, that's why I recommended him to the board. He's the premier expert in the state of Pennsylvania as far as I'm concerned.
And can we, can you expand a little bit further on the zoning? About reviewing the zoning? And why this isn't, this in writing isn't really effective?
Township's listener and special counsel both opinion that the ordinance as it's currently crafted deals with the utilization of this, these vehicles as in a commercial establishment.
Just to be clear, we have not weighed in, John, there were two separate councils.
Two separate councils, okay. I'm sorry. I know there were two guys, but. And, and, and I have no problem with you coming in, having that conversation when he's here, because again, it's a legal issue and, and, you know, the board will be, want, be a part of that conversation as well. But he said that the way he has interpreted the ordinance is that it deal, it is written to construe that the utilization of those vehicles would be in a commercial setting. Or in a setting where people could come and ride on it, establish a track, and come and ride in that track.
The non-motorized bicycles?
Motorized, the motorized stuff.
No, no, no. In, in the ordinance where it says non-motorized bicycles, that's still.
Listen, we're gonna get really confused here. We're much more confused than we are. But I think, I think, listen, I'm, I'm, it's best, thank you. We fully understand your position, but you think it's not permitted under zoning. I think it's, um, very important for the board to have the solicitor here, so that he can, uh, recount to you and to the board, the rationale that he used to get to his decision. I, I can't get any better than that. I'm sorry, I was just, you know.
Is there any way we can meet with him to discuss how they're making their interpretation?
I'll try and set a meeting up. I'll set a meeting up. And if I can get him to, if I get him there the same day, that, that makes it easier, okay? Then, the same day that the, the sound guy will be there.
Just, just.
Yeah, I can, okay, okay, I'm fine. Special counsel is Tom, Oscar, Os, O S E T E. Alright, I will, by the end of the week, I'll send a letter to you all. And if I can get a time, I'll be in that letter. The date is November the eighth. I don't know if I can be in the morning, but I'll try and get the special counsel here as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Any other noise ordinance comments?
Mike, Jack, John, Oscar.
Who's that?
No, like I said, my original statement was just, I, I didn't think we should have motorcycles driving and damaging your yard. That's, that's what I was trying to explain.
Okay, awesome. Did you, did you wanna speak? Did you wanna speak? You signed up. Did you wanna talk about?
Who?
Were you good? You good?
Me? I didn't have my hand up.
So did you wanna talk about anything else? Just making sure.
Well, I think they should have.
Just give your name and address again.
Anna Eifert, ten Wegman Road. I think they should have that man there when they are actually running those vehicles, because they're, um, what are they called? Dirt bikes. That's what they are, dirt bikes.
And where's your property in relation to this? Just.
I live at the corner of Old Freedensburg and Wegman.
Okay.
And it is loud.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Carl, do you have any comments?
Need a question, a comment about the Running Country Club not being taxed anymore, cause it's not a business. The lawsuit with D.V.A. What was that about? And if they win, do they get to come back and run their business at the country club?
That's legal action, so. It's a contract dispute. No, they're not seeking that kind of relief. They're never gonna come back.
Not gonna come back.
Otherwise, it's a contract dispute. Do the easy.
Is it public knowledge why you're suing them?
They're suing us, we're suing them, yeah.
Oh, so it's.
Cause they're fighting over our contract is the easiest way to explain it without getting into.
Alright, um, support of concepts, remember that? Whatever happened, whatever happened with that, it just went away.
When they filed the lawsuit against us, they dropped the lawsuit.
They dropped it?
Yeah.
So it's no, it's all done with that?
All done with.
And the third one is, um, the FOP, so the township.
I'm not aware of that one.
Are you aware of that?
Define suit. There's grievances.
There's a grievance and it's not.
There's grievances, yeah. That's part of the process.
Have you ever dealt with the FOP grievance or lawsuit before?
About forty years worth here.
What's that?
For about forty years, yes.
For forty years?
Yes.
So that's a common thing?
Yes.
Okay. What I need to know.
Thank you, Carl. One other thing I wanna add for the, speaking of grievances. I think what Carl's, Mr. Schampf referred to is, there was, there was a grievance that was filed, uh, on behalf of, I think, Brian Bolinger, against the township, that I'm, that I was just made aware of. In fact, the board should decide if they want to appoint, uh, as, the way the process works, we've explained it at prior meetings, is there's a step one, a step two, and then a a later step afterwards. But the board has to either hear the grievance as a whole, uh, or it can designate a hearing officer to hear it. And we can do it now, give it another lead, but it was.
Yeah, we'll do it appropriate.
We'll do it now.
Okay. Uh, so the board could consider whether it wants to appoint a hearing officer. Appoint Mr. John Granger to do that? Need a motion. As protocol, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it.
And we gotta move, and.
What's that? She had to step out.
Yeah.
She's not in the room. Ray's the smartest person at the table left, the baby. Um, next up, supervisor reports. Head chief. No, I just said head chief.
No, you're including us. So, just a couple things. The, uh, Exeter Arts Council, and they had an event at the Running Country Club on Saturday. So it was, it was called like Suburbans Catchers. So, and you're gonna do more events, and it'll be, not necessarily in the township, but where you just come and just, you know, bring your artistic side. If you paint, if you color, if you take pictures, whatever. So there's a lot of cool pictures that people took and had painted or colored, or whatever you wanna do. It's, so it was really cool. So they were at the backside of the, uh, uh, the country club, cause the front side is obviously under construction. And, um, I know that one gentleman, Brett Diamond, he took some really cool pictures. So it's, it's just, you know, whatever moves you. Like, the one I loved is a black and white, they have a ball that was in the leaves. It was just kinda cool, which happens a lot. And then, also to thank the chief, I had a young gentleman reach out to me, wanted to, uh, know more about being a police officer. Unfortunately, wasn't old enough to do a ride-along. But, um, he stopped down today and the, and the chief was able to show him around and, and, and give him an insight. So hopefully, I'm aspiring another, you know, potential police officer. And I believe he is, uh, working with a volunteer fireman for Exeter, so. So it's very good. He seems like a good kid. So again, thank you to the chief for, for doing that and taking the time out of his day to do that.
Thank you, Eddie. Jeff?
Uh, just update on Service Electric. They did get back to us and they're, they want us as a board to put together an agenda of all the complaints and concerns that we received from the residents from the town hall. So I'm gonna start drafting that, send that to everyone, so we can all add to it. And then once we do that, they're gonna meet with us to go over all the complaints, and then we can look at scheduling another town hall as well with them there.
I'd be great.
I don't know. You saw, they sent a summary of the meeting to John, so we have.
Yeah, good, yeah, he did send that to me, so I'll put that into. So they were very open to speaking with us, and then, you know, they wanna get an agenda with us and talk about stuff. And then we can take that to another town hall as well.
Excellent. Mr. Spees? I just wanted to, um, the library got a gold level P.A. Forward Star program. They were recognized by the state. So I just wanna call out the library for the wonderful job that they do. Mallory and her team are top-notch, so just wanted to, um, congratulate them. And then Halloween is now Wednesday, so get the word out, so everybody knows about it.
So just real quick, I forgot. I did meet with Mike Giavina, but, um, also the police officers, Sergeant Benson and, um, Ten Shade. Harley, Harley, not, ten Harley, Harley. Um, we're doing a traffic studying at the school. So, I'm gonna meet with Mike again. We're gonna talk further about ways we can help improve the, with kids heading to school and the traffic often with the buses and, and stuff like that. So, uh, it's a work in progress. And we're gonna talk about, um, the school district and the Happy Landings. We'll, we'll bring that up, cause Jeff definitely wants to keep an open communication on that.
Yeah, I think everyone does, but the, I'm kinda scared of having a project.
So, and then, um, and so Mike just came back from a vacation in Spain, which is really cool. So we're gonna set some up like next, sometime next month. So we can keep the board updated on that.
Thanks, Eddie. Motion to adjourn. Make that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, ayes have it.